Can anyone hear me?
I can.
Okay, if, if. Brian, could you just unmute yourself just so I can be sure you're. Say something.
I'm here, Ernie, don't worry.
Okay, well, I want to be, I'm not sure, this is the first time I've ever done a meeting. So. Do we have a quorum?
We do.
Okay.
Is Melissa okay?
No, Melissa won't be joining us tonight.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna be the, the chair for the, for the evening. Jeff?
Yeah, again. I seem to have problems only with the Norwich Planning Commission connections. I, my chat's disabled and I, and I don't have the hand and arm signals.
You're definitely listed here.
I, I can't get in, I, I don't. It seems.
Just raise your hand and, and, and you know, I'll, I'll try to pay attention. Do we want to start now or do you want to wait a couple more minutes? See if there's anyone else? Jeff LaBelle, I think is missing.
There he is.
There he is, okay. All right, then. Why don't we get started? So it's the meeting, the, the April 13th meeting of the town, the Norwich Planning Commission. And it is 6:33. Like I said. I hope people will understand that this is my first time doing this, so, and I only had about two quarters of an hour to even look over things to. To take it, to take over. I have been asked to. Ask someone, asked to see if someone would move that we amend the agenda to move the election of the officers to the May meeting. So. Since that's the first thing on our agenda. I would like to see if anyone would amend the. The agenda.
So move.
Jeff?
You're on, you're on mute, Jeff. Were you seconding?
Second, thank you.
I have a quick question. Is, is Melissa unable to attend the meeting? Is that the reason for this?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Ernie.
Yes.
In terms of discussion, can, can we discuss amending the agenda?
Sure.
My comment was going to be under two meeting objectives, two subset, two or II. It says planning commission or code of conduct, comma, ethics. I think this is a misnomer, and I think it should say planning commission, conduct and conflict of interest. Because if we're going to talk about planning commission conduct, there are a bunch of VSA's that are missing.
Okay. Do, should we? What does, does anyone else have any opinions? I mean, should we have a, a vote to change that as well?
I can speak to an opinion first. I've noticed sometimes the agenda headings are generalized, so I'm not 100% sure the intention of this agenda item. If it's meant to be specific, I'm fine with making it more specific. If it was meant to be general and. I can understand that too, so.
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that question because I don't know. Well. Somebody want to make a motion? Well, let's, let's.
Can, can we?
Do we want to handle both of these things at the same time or should we separate them? Jeff?
I, I think it might be helpful just for purposes of keeping things straight to do one change at a time.
Okay, I, I think that's, that's reasonable. Is that okay? Mr. Jeff Goodrich? Okay. So we're going to deal with just agenda, amending the agenda related to the. Election of the. Chair and vice chair. So it's already been. Raised and seconded. Jackie, do you want to? State for the record what, what the wording you want the motion to be?
Oh, I, I, I was just repeating your motion. I moved that we. I moved that we move the elections until the May, the first meeting in May.
Good. Alright, so those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
So Rod, you have all the names in the past we would list.
Yeah, Ernie. It's not a big deal, but under COVID-19 requirements, you're supposed to do a roll call for.
Oh, alright, alright, alright.
Yeah, so it would be good.
Why don't, we'll do, let's do it right so that there's, so. I'm going to repeat the vote. I'm going to basically say based on the lineup I have in front of my screen. So Jackie?
Yes.
Jeff LaBelle?
Hi.
Lea Romano?
Hi.
Jeff Goodrich?
Hey.
Myself, hi.
Brian.
Who? Brian. Oh, Brian.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, so that's, so that's six, six oh, right?
Six oh, that's right.
All right. Does somebody want to? Make a motion? To change the wording of the agenda? Item. From planning commissioner code of ethics, the code of conduct and ethics to planning commissioner code of conduct and. Conflict of interest. Does I have that set correct?
Yeah, it, it's with, with what's in the packet, as, as I observe it, I would change to, to, to planning commission conduct and conflict of interest.
Alright, somebody want to make a motion to make that change?
I just need a second.
Second.
Okay. So is there any?
Discussion, yeah, I, I'm just wondering, I don't know who put that on the agenda and whether. And I assume that Rod and Melissa conferred about the agenda. Is there any concern, Rod, that you would have about the change in the title?
No. Brian has his hand up, I'm not.
Oh, Brian?
Why, can I just get a response from Rod first and then?
Alright.
So, yeah, I conferred with Melissa and my understanding is that it was a, it was in response to a request from, from Leah and so. Yes, specifically the, the attachments or the, the enclosures in the document are the. Bylaws for planning, the planning commission bylaws and the conflict of interest policy from the select board, which is also governing policy for, for commissions as well. But I, I don't. I don't have a, I don't have a view except, you know, just in emails backwards and forwards, that was the wording. And I don't know if it originated with Leah, right? You know, it was really just sort of a transcription of. A line from an email, but Leah can probably explain. I don't know if.
Unless, unless Brian wants to go first, I'm, since you mentioned my name, I'm happy to say something.
Yeah.
So in conversation with Melissa, I just suggested that if we were doing the election, it would be good. In my opinion, good practice to put together what we are committing to. So it wasn't like a larger discussion, it was just a reminder of. You know, how, how our code of conduct is, what we're supposed to, what our purview is, so that we just have that all wrapped up together. So given that, from what I mentioned, it might be punted as well. That's what I have to share. It was really just making sure we're all in agreement before we choose our leadership, what we're all agreeing to. That's all.
Brian? Brian?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know if since Melissa was behind putting this on the agenda, there was real urgency here if we should defer the item until she's at the meeting.
That to me seems like a good idea, actually. Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think these are great documents, both. At least the select words, conflict of interest policy is something I've circulated before the planning commission. I just think the, the title is, is a misnomer because I've also sent on to the commission before more than once. What the VSA say about the planning commission's role with respect to the statute as opposed to select board staff, et cetera.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, I'd like, I don't know if we need to vote down Jeff's motion in order to do this, but I'd like to suggest that we move this agenda item to the next meeting.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I move that we. Move the discussion of the bylaws and the conflict of interest policy to the first meeting in May.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, second. Right? So. Take a vote, starting with Jackie?
Yes.
Jeff LaBelle?
Hi.
Jeff Goodrich?
Hi.
Lea Romano?
Hi.
Brian Loeb?
Hi.
Hi, for me too. So unanimous.
We're speeding through the agenda.
That's, that's, so just, just as a quick point of interest for everybody. Out of habit, I think you're referring to the first meeting in May. The first meeting in May is going to be the last meeting in May also. There's just one meeting a month. Okay.
Just in case there's more than one meeting, we want.
Really appreciate that attention to detail, but I'm really hoping that we can just stick to one, so.
Thanks. So, so the next item, well. Are we going to discuss the wastewater study? Issue? Is, is everyone able to, willing to discuss that tonight? Jackie?
Yes.
So Stuart, I'm sorry, Ernie, are, we haven't, are you talking about adopting the agenda? We haven't formally adopted.
Well, that, that's, I'm just giving some people the opportunity to discuss whether we're going to discuss that as well tonight or is that going to be amended as well?
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as amended both times.
Jeff, didn't you in your email want to have my motion be identified as a separate item?
Well, I'm, I'm going to be corrected, Jeff. I'm trying to get past item one, which is approve the agenda.
I'm okay with that. If you, if you don't need that change anymore.
I will. Approving. No, no, I'm, I'm. I'll, y'all saw my email. So Jeff, to your point, I sent an email to folks. Basically saying to the extent Jeff LaBelle's resolution with respect to Marion Cross School is an item. I'm going to have to recuse, and if we were at Tracy Hall, I would move from the table to the audience. And to the extent the planning commission would allow me to engage as a member of the audience or, or other members of the audience as we used to do. Then I would engage, otherwise I'll be quiet, which is not the same as the policy discussion about. Sewer study.
So we are going to keep that on the agenda tonight. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I think the, maybe we could just quickly discuss Jeff's question. So. What I hear him saying is that he would like to be able to participate as a member of the audience at the appropriate time and doesn't want to have to recuse himself. Entirely from a discussion of wastewater, but does feel he needs to recuse himself from a discussion of my motion. So. I was wondering if we could simply. Have the discussion about wastewater before we, you know, not, I don't have to make a motion at the beginning of that. We could just have the wastewater conversation. Then we could decide at some relevant time if I want to submit my motion or if somebody else wants to motion or we want to amend it. And at that point, Jeff needs to recuse himself and he could, he can recuse himself.
Okay, Jackie?
I'm just confused, I'm sorry. I think this recuse, the question is very important. And from my understanding of what recusal means, it says the, the person involved shall not personally participate in a deliberation leading to an act or decision in which he or she has a conflict of interest. So it says, when you're recused, you're not going to participate. So. I'm, I'm unclear about this business about being in the audience and, and still participating. I thought, it's my understanding you have to remove yourself and not participate. That's my understanding.
Jeff?
Well, to me, Jackie's points are very important. I, I think the law supports that. As a planning commission member, to the extent Jeff LaBelle offers a resolution that pertains to Marion Cross School, I would have to walk from the table to the audience. I, I cannot participate in a deliberative context with the planning commission with respect to Marion Cross School. I can, however, as a citizen like every other citizen participate to the extent the commission allows participation from the audience. So to Jeff LaBelle's point, question is, should the wastewater study be devoted to or divided into A and B, Jeff's resolution and the sewer study? And I don't care which goes first, it's not material to me.
Okay. Just, for, for my clarification, does that mean, is there, which one do you feel, which one do you feel you have a conflict of interest that you'd have to recuse yourself from?
I cannot participate in anything that relates to Marion Cross School. I have to recuse myself and sit in the audience as a member of the public.
Okay.
So Jackie has a follow up.
Yeah, once, I, I just want to be, understand, is, is sitting in the audience still okay? I, I'm, I'm asking out of curiosity because as I read this, I have a question about that. Is there any authority here on, on how this works?
Well, I, I can say I'm not an authority on this, but I'm, I, I just pose the hypothetical, let's say that. That, that someone from the school board were here and participating in our meeting.
Yep.
Right? And we're talking about Marion Cross School. Would they be allowed to participate in the, in the meeting as a member of the public? Even though they have a conflict of interest, I think it's clear, right, that they would be permitted to participate as a member of the public and listen and have a right to hear. So. I, I don't know who drafted this particular section, but it, it would seem odd to me that a member of the planning commission who is conflicted would have less. Right than someone else's, because I, I don't, that's what I don't understand. Maybe Rod has some.
Yeah, so the point, the, the, the point, you're not comparing apples with apples in that hypothetical, Jeff LaBelle. So. The planning commissioner is an appointed, an appointed person appointed by the select board. One of the, one of the commissioners that's charged with their statutory obligation under the statute. And to represent the best interests of the town as a whole. And where they are receiving a remuneration. For a person or an entity that's coming before the planning commission for consideration. They're obligated to recuse themselves. The issue about whether they can contribute to the discussion right up to the decision or action of the body. So in this instance, voting on the motion. Is really a question of whether the, their participation in, in the deliberation and discussion is going to influence or direct the planning commission to behave in a particular, with a particular course of action. And so the only way you could really ensure that you were not overtly influencing the planning commissioners in the deliberations overtly is to be silent and or preferably absent. And so in my experience, on DRBs and on planning commissions, where there have been members of the planning commission or members of the DRB who got a contractual relationship with a party. Who is making some kind of representation, representation before that board or before that commission, where the commission or the board is going to make a decision that has a material effect on the outcome of that entity. Then that person excuses themselves and is absented from the meeting and they do not participate in the deliberation. Because of the possibility of them influencing the outcome of the, of, of the process by commenting. From some other space in the audience or somewhere else. That's my understanding of the purpose of recusal.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I don't agree with Rod at all, after hundreds or thousands of meetings with other commissions. Nonetheless, let me restate that. So. I, I've seen many times with planning commissions or zoning boards or planning boards or conservation commissions where someone steps off the board. And then represents an applicant as a member of the audience. They're not in the deliberative process. Both in Vermont and New Hampshire. In this particular case, I don't have any intention to comment with respect to the resolution Jeff LaBelle's proposed. But I would like to proceed in accordance with the law.
Jeff, Brian?
Sure, maybe, Ernie, you haven't had a chance to say what you think, but it's pretty easy for you to resolve this. Just don't call on him and then we can just move on.
Okay, I'll, I'll, that's, that's a, I'll keep that in mind. I think that what we should do from, at this point, since we are going to discuss this is. Allow the public to speak unless anyone has any objections. Let them to have, have a way in on, this is basically it for the night. And then proceed from there.
And we're still working on trying to approve the agenda, correct? I just want to clarify.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry. My computer decided to reset, so I apologize. Did anything happen while I was gone?
Yeah, we, we, no.
Extended.
But, but we should. I've lost track because I'm not taking notes. Did we actually vote on changing?
We, we're taking a motion on approving the agenda as amended.
As amended, okay. So I guess what we need to do first of all is have a vote on, on that, which means somebody has to make a motion.
So moved.
Jeff? I mean, Brian?
Sorry, as amended, does that include separating the points that Jeff Goodrich requested? I'm not clear.
Yeah, I already made the motion, there was a second. I'm glad to withdraw to accommodate Jeff LaBelle and this. But the question I posed in the deliberative process was, what do we break it into A and B?
I, my personal view is we don't need to break it up. We just need to have a discussion first before any motions is on the table. And at the point in which a motion is on the table, if, if it is such that requires recusal, Jeff would need to recuse. Now, you guys, if you guys prefer to do it differently, that's fine, but.
So my motion stands. I'm, I already made your motion, Jeff. I, I'm glad to withdraw and allow you to make the motion.
And the motion was been made, just been made, why don't we just vote on it?
Okay, do we have a second?
Let me withdraw my motion first so that Jeff's motion stands.
Okay.
Okay, so Jeff, Jeff Goodrich's motion is withdrawn. Jeff LaBelle's motion stands. Now we need a second.
Brian's second, I don't know. Second?
I'll second it and then I have a question.
Okay, you seconded?
I do.
Okay. Now, you have a question?
Yes. Okay, so now the motion is to approve the agenda as amended while keeping it one point on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's fine. Jeff Goodrich, does that's, are you clear what you feel comfortable doing and what you need to do?
Brian, I am one member of this commission and I'm glad to vote in favor of this motion.
Excellent. I'm all good, Ernie.
Okay. Jackie?
Okay, do we resolve the question of what, what recusal means? Has, has that question been resolved yet?
Jeff?
Recusal is up to the planning commission member.
The individual who, who is being asked to recuse themselves? That, that person?
An individual cannot be asked to recuse themselves. Only the individual can recuse themselves.
So I, I saw that Rod had, was about to speak about this, I think, when I. Was unceremoniously deposed for the meeting. I don't know if Rod, you had anything to comment on this, but.
I did, very quickly. The, you were making a comparison between two different, two different types of, of participation. So it kind of an apples and oranges comparison. So a member of the commission, a planning commissioner or a member of, of a board. So a member of the commission, a planning commissioner or a member of a board is appointed by the select board is obligated to bring forth any potential conflict of interest and recuse themselves when it's, when there's a clear material and they have a clear material interest in their outcome, or they're representing a client or an entity that is making representations to that board or commission and requires a decision by that board or commission. And for them to move from being a commissioner to being a member of the public and then continuing to participate in the deliberations or comment on those deliberations or ask questions as a member of the public still stands, provides the possibility that they will influence the deliberations of the commission, their colleagues, their fellow commissioners or board members, and such that would still represent some form of influence on the outcome. This, in my experience, has gone as far as to include holding up signs, gesturing, making facial expressions or using hand signals. So in my experience with other boards and commissions, particularly professionals who have a series of ethical standard, set of ethical standards that apply to them in their professional capacity, are careful to recuse themselves and remove themselves from the room and the discussion so that there's no suggestion that they're influencing either the deliberation or the outcome. So it's not just a matter of not voting, they're not present. And Jeff Goodrich disputes my characterization.
Hey, Ernie, fundamentally, we can repeat this all night long. I don't agree with Rod. I intend to recuse myself with respect to anything related to Marion Cross.
Okay. I think that Jeff Lubel pointed, oh, Brian, pointed out that simply Jeff Goodrich not be recognized should he stay within the meeting. To me, that seems like a reasonable, that seems reasonable because person doing the recusal is supposed to be, the person who's recusing themselves is the one who sort of makes the judgment of whether they're going to be recused. Jeff is correct when he says that, you know, no one can be forced to recuse themselves. It becomes problematic if they don't when they should, but they can't be forced. Just second. But on the other hand, sitting in the audience and listening, especially when he also has a, not just a remunerative relationship, but he's also a citizen in the town. So he does have the rights as a citizen to be present. That's the way I would, I would argue it. And I think that, you know, he may not have the right to, because of his conflict, to influence, but he certainly has the right to actually know what's going on and see what, and participate in that manner. So I think that that would be the way we should go. Jeff?
Yeah, so to the extent there's a question related to Marion Cross School, as a member of the audience, I have no intention of responding. And if I do, I hope folks to hold me accountable and I withdraw that response. To not acknowledge me as a member of the audience would be unlawful from my perspective because there are policy issues with respect to the sewer study. So if I were to say, for instance, I don't see the point in the sewer study, and I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm not saying that's what I think. As a policy matter, I should be able to address that at least as a member of the audience. And if these were separate items, as a member of the planning commission.
Okay. Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, I have a suggestion about how to proceed, which is that we that we don't take public comment during discussion of any motion that we make with regard to, you know, that references, or any motion that we make frankly, with regard to wastewater or Marion Cross, so that if people have public comments they want to make, they could make it. Members of the public could make them now during the public comment period. Once we approve the agenda. Or, you know, at the end, if there's a period of time, and that way we won't have to worry about whether he, you know, there's any opportunity for him to influence the discussion because there won't be any input from the public during the consideration of the motion.
Anyone else, anyone get an opinion? Brian?
That's consistent with what I said earlier.
Okay. Okay, well, I think what we should do right now is have the vote on approving the amended agenda. Move on, allow the public to speak first. I think Jeff Lubel's idea is, is, is sound, yeah, a sound idea and a good precaution. And I think that we have to, to some degree, especially since I'm new at this, I'm going to just have to sort of see what happens. So we have a motion. Do we have a motion? Jeff Lubel, I think you made a motion. Has it been seconded?
Brian seconded it. It's time for the vote.
All right, so Jackie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff Lubel?
I.
Jeff Goodrich?
I.
Layer Armando?
Hi.
Brian Loeb?
Hi.
I, unanimous. Okay, let's move on. We have, the next part of the agenda is comments from the public. So if there's any members of the public that have something they need to, to address before the commission, I can raise a hand and or whatever stands for that, since I can't see any of them right at the moment.
Ernie, can you not see, Stuart has his hand up?
Okay, Stuart. Yeah, then Stuart disappeared as soon as I called.
Stuart Richards, 82 Elm Street. If I understood correctly, you're not going to recognize any members of the public to speak during the course of the, during the course of this discussion. I think that's highly inappropriate and highly unusual. It seems to me that before you agree to do something, when there is discussion about something, public input is important and you ought to listen to it. So, you know, I obviously don't have a vote on this, on this body, but I am a member of the public and I would like my comments and any other comments that come from the public to be heard before you make decisions on things. And that's typically the way it is with the select board and other commissions and boards. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stuart. Is there anyone else? Like I said, I can't see anything about the public right at the moment.
Ernie, can you not see the people who?
No, I don't, I don't see hands raised or anything like that right at the moment, so.
Can I just add in response to Stuart's comment? I mean, I, I think we definitely should hear what Stuart has to say during the public comment period. And if, before we make a motion, you know, if there's an opportunity to hear what he has to say and other people, we should definitely do it. I'm just trying to figure out a way to avoid the potential influence that people are worried about with respect to recusal.
Well, I think, I think, you know, that if I just don't call on Jeff Goodrich during that kind of debate, he's still being allowed to participate insofar as what his own personal interests are related that have nothing to do with his, you know, his representation of a client as a citizen of the town. You know, I think that that can provide the same sort of separation, you know, between conflict and non-conflicted as, and we, I think we, I think Stuart's actually right. We could let the public speak also, at least at some point before any votes are taken or anything like that, because he's correct, the public should be listened to about that.
Hey, hey, Ernie, the agenda's been passed. It starts with public comment. And then we go through the agenda and public comment at the end. So it's a done deal at this point.
All right. While we move on to reviewing the minutes, we're viewing an approval of the minutes before we get back with, then the next item after that would be announcements, updates and reports, I suppose. And then we would be getting to the wastewater study itself. So unless there's any more comments from the public.
Ernie, just before you move on, Jackie has her hand up.
Oh, no, I, I thought we were on to the next item in the agenda. So I was going to make a motion to approve the minutes, but you're still asking for comments, Ernie?
I just wanted to make sure that the public has had, is, you know, give one more call to see if they have anything to say. And then if no one raises a hand, I think it's time to move on to the approval of the minutes. So I can't see any other, any other hands. So I'm going to assume there's no one else wants to speak.
There's no hands that we can see.
Okay, so let's, let's review and approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to? Oh, we do have the motion. Any discussion? Okay. Jackie, how do you vote?
I moved, I approved the minutes.
Jeff Lubel?
Hi.
Jeff Goodrich?
I'm staying.
Layer Armando?
Hi.
Stuart, and Brian Loeb?
Hi, for me as well.
Hi for me. So five, four and one abstention. Okay, the next item on the agenda is announcements, reports, updates and correspondence. Rod, do we, is anyone got anything that they want to bring up at this point? Brian?
Yeah, I said I would report back on the childcare committee.
Okay.
So we had another meeting and we're moving forward with designing and soon to be implementing a supply side kind of a set of one-on-one key informant interviews with childcare providers in the area and separately some kind of a survey with parents of children in the, in the kind of childcare age range. Alongside that, we're learning about, in collaboration with folks from Let's Grow Kids, the advocacy organization, as well as members of the childcare committee itself, models of municipal support for childcare solutions. And so we've, we've received a bit of a reprieve from the select board in terms of our the timeline for our deliverables, but that hasn't slowed the work. There really has been a lot of energy and it's been on a personal level, very rewarding to see everyone so committed to exploring what, what is not just feasible, what's imaginable. And it's, 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 it's a good energy. And I encourage you, if you're interested in the issue, to sit on, in the next meeting. It's a good group and people want to do good work.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else to bring up? Anybody? Okay, then let's move on to the wastewater study.
Ernie, did you want me to, there were, people had asked questions the last time we met. And I have some, some information to provide to the, to the group. Did you want me to do that first?
Well, unless somebody else has a better idea, then I think that would be the way to get started.
Okay. So a, there was sort of a series of related or similar questions around what it would take to submit or what would, what would it take for Norwich to undertake a wastewater study that would be supported by some state resources? And so I had been having some email communication with members of the Agency of Natural Resources, Department of Environmental Conservation, in particular, a person called Tom Brown, who's the project lead on the very clumsily acronymed thing called the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. So that's, you don't want to go, you don't want to try and say that acronym. There's no vowels in it. So that's the program that we would be utilizing if we were to seek support, financial support to undertake a study. So he's, in a nutshell, he's the bullet items that are somewhat good news, actually. So there's no calendar associated with this. If you want to do it, you can apply any time of year, any month of the year, whenever. You basically go through a process of developing a request for qualifications. They review the request for qualifications and ensure that the town's procurement policies are consistent with their policies, which are standard federal procurement policies. The range of fund, you know, the cost of the study varies widely according to the size of the community and the size of the, of the problem that the studies or problems that the study is attempting to address. So that's pretty fluid. The key here that's really important for us is that there's a, it's an interest-free loan. That's, so therefore you're only paying the principal, you don't pay any interest. You don't have to make any payments for the first five years and then you make five payments. So in other words, if it was a $20,000, $20,000 study, then the town would not pay until 2026 and then we'd start paying. And then you'd make five annual payments to pay it back. And then 50% of the total cost of the study would be reimbursed. So you're really only paying, in that example, $10,000. So it's more affordable and more flexible in terms of the funding arrangements than I had previously understood. And so that part is good. The so, so that, that, that's the real takeaway story there. There are some more, you know, particular details about the RFQ process and how we would go about doing that and those kinds of things, but generally that it seems relatively straightforward. Stepping back out, zooming out a little bit, everyone, of course, is quite excited about the fact that there's a large amount of federal money earmarked for each state and a lot of federal money earmarked for infrastructure and that wastewater systems look like infrastructure or more importantly, smell like infrastructure. So there was this brief discussion, we may or may not be able to take advantage of what is still an unknown amount of money that would, that would be channeled to Vermont for that purpose. As we know, the governor has made wastewater treatment for villagers a priority and spending priorities for the federal money, the so-called upper money. But it's still too early to tell exactly, you know, how that prioritization would work in terms of the operation of this fund or, you know, the terms and conditions. So the funding source for this activity is already 80% federal and 20% state. So it all depends on how this kind of plays out. I mean, sort of a it's wasted too, just too early to know what the rules are going to be in terms of accessing those upper funds. And then there's a three-year window. We do know one thing, though, that there's a three-year window for the spending of the upper money, starting pretty much now. And so as this unfolds, it, you know, we make, it could be close or we might, we might, we might miss, you know, that window might close a little bit before we get to it. It just depends. It's a little, again, it's just a little uncertain. But like I said, the takeaway is the money is there, the application is really straightforward. As soon as the select board decides this, you know, so in the sequence would be if the planning commission is happy with this information and thinks that we should do a wastewater study, then you make a recommendation to the select board and then the select board agrees that they want to do it, then we can start the process of developing an RFQ of which there are templates and so forth. And we can begin, you know, that process, but there isn't any deadline or, 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 you know, those kinds of problems for us to deal with right now. I'm happy to take questions that people might have about how that program is set up and operated, or I can move on to the next point.
Thank, thank you, Rod. I have a couple of questions and maybe they'll be answered by the next points or these. From what you, from what you mentioned about this fund and no calendar and process. Is there a turnover between a timetable between acceptance and, and usage of, of the money, like if we apply, do we have to wait three months? I'm just, I want to make sure I understand that.
I, I don't know how quickly they will turn things around. I don't think it's going to be super fast just because there's not very many staff and it's, it's pretty limited. Resources and they're really busy with a lot of other stuff, but I don't think it's going to be dragged out. I, I, I think it, that would be something to, I mean, everyone's keen to kind of get this stuff going. So as long as it's a competently put together RFQ, which I'm comfortable providing, I don't see there being a very big delay. But I wouldn't, you know, so it would be like a month to two month turnaround is what I would reasonably expect.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a follow-up question, if that's okay with the group. Can you remind us what your, the estimate, I think you, last month you gave an estimate of the cost of a wastewater study?
It's, yeah, I, I was working with a ballpark figure of around about $30,000. It might come in a little bit less than that. And I've got some calls out to other people that have done studies or, you know, like towns that have done studies and so forth. That have tried to kind of look at their scope and see how close it would be to the kind of scope that we're thinking about. Um, and you know, yeah, that's my sense somewhere and you know.
I appreciate that. I, for some reason I had in my head 40,000. So.
I mentioned that earlier and I think it's actually a little less than that. Somewhere $30,000 range. So.
Thank you.
Ernie, Jeff LaBelle now has his hand up.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah, um, just a question about the funding mechanism. Does the, does the ability to defer for five years and/or the partial reimbursement depend on whether or not you decide to move forward with a wastewater project itself, or is this now a different funding mechanism or have different rules from the one?
That's interesting. That also, um, that, yeah, my understanding from a conversation that I had, a conversation I had yesterday was that, in fact, you would, you would pay for the study, 50% of the, the, the study and you'd have a five-year deferment on, on your first payment. But that if you were to move towards an infrastructure commitment, so a capital project of some kind, they would instantly roll that existing debt you had for the study, they would roll it over into the loan that you would then have with the capital project.
It would become part of, it would become a project cost of the larger project.
Yeah, exactly.
So just to be clear, so if the cost $30,000 and we decide to move forward with a a capital project, then the $15,000, that's our responsibility would be treated as a project cost enrolled into that loan. But if we don't decide to move forward with a capital project, let's say we decide that the result of the study is that we don't need a sewer system and we don't recommend it, then we would owe essentially $15,000 in.
Better than five years, if we.
Over five years, in five years. So we would be $3,000 a year for five years.
Yeah, starting, starting five years from now.
Okay, that's really helpful.
Okay.
Oh yeah, I, I, maybe, are you going to now talk about the substance of the, of the study or, or no?
Uh, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, um, I think that the, the the program breaks out very, very early preliminary work, some of which we've sort of done through the process of the town plan and through the dialogue that's been ongoing, the planning commission for some time. And then there are the two middle phases, which are usually undertaken, well, are always undertaken by an engineering, a qualified engineering company, other feasibility study and their preliminary engineering study, the so, you know, and they're off, they're, sometimes they're separated out. Typically they're, they're done together. So the suggestion was that we would start with a feasibility study. And then, but we would draw, draw up the RFQ to be broad enough so that if we were satisfied with the work of the engineering company doing the feasibility study, they would stay on and continue the work of doing the preliminary, preliminary engineering study. So it would kind of be a soft fade out of the feasibility study and into the pre-engineering or the preliminary engineering study. And that would, the preliminary engineering study gives more accurate cost estimates and, and addresses some of the more complex technical issues that are one assumes is going to be foregrounded in the feasibility study. I, I guess, and I want to be really clear here, I'm not talking about Norwich. Hypothetically, I guess you could imagine a situation where you undertake the feasibility study and hoped that you're going to get a preliminary engineering study, but, but something turns up, something sort of really unfortunate turns up and you realize it's just not feasible. That gives you as the town and the engineering company, the opportunity to sort of back out and just quit while you're ahead. But the expectation and the typical pattern is that you start with a feasibility study and then move into the 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 preliminary engineering study.
Is there also a planning component where you're getting public input and trying to assess the demand for the, you know, we don't want to do this if there's no demand for it, for example?
Um, yeah, so, um, there are both in the feasibility, both in the feasibility study and in the technicals and in the preliminary engineering study, there is substantial outreach and an opportunity for the, for the, for the public to articulate a bit of view or views about what, what their preferences are or, and to ask questions. So it, it operates on several different layers. Some of the studies that I circulated with you, you would have noticed that some of them included really detailed, comprehensive online surveys and the summaries of extensive public outreach, all pre-COVID, you know, face-to-face scenarios, or at least, you know, people standing within six feet of each other in a, in a range of settings, as well as reviews of all the, all of wastewater permits for the town, you know, and, and other, and others sort of assembling of, of, of information and material. I think Ernie, Brian had his hand up.
Yeah, Brian.
Thanks. And thanks, Rod. That's really helpful to additional information you've been able to gather. To Jeff's point, opportunity for public comment is, is I think different than what Jeff's getting at, which is a study of public demand. And, and I think his question is, is that a core component of the, the study? Would it be a requirement in the RFP that such a study of public demand be done? Or is it simply that the study would allow for public comment at various phases?
Um, I, I think certainly that's one of the things that you would seek to find out from the various engineering companies that respond to the RFQ, the breadth and the, and if you like, the sort of sensitivity of their public outreach process. I'm, I'm sure it varies. To be clear, the studies that I looked at, um, estimated existing demand by using the wastewater permits as a, as a sort of a hard data point. So in other words, every, every, every parcel that's, that's got an onsite system in Norwich has got a wastewater permit associated with it. And that's sets a, a physical limit on how much wastewater that system is designed to accommodate. So you take that as a hard number. You look at the build-out, you can do, you do a build-out analysis to try and figure out what over time, any increased real demand for wastewater would be. You look at the town plan and other documents and, and see whether somebody's proposing to develop a particular area of town in a different way, or, you know, so another, that would be part of the build-out analysis and/or, you know, existing community commitments, like building a new school or whatever it is. And then in addition to that, I might, I might use a term like public sentiment. What is the public's preference or views? How do the, you know, what, what, what are the, for want of a better term, the feelings of the public with regard to a variety of potential wastewater solutions? So in different communities, you'll get, you'll get a different interest. You might get some communities that are much more interested in a so-called soil-based system or alter, or alternative systems for environmental or economic reasons. And you might get some communities such, you know, that are more interested in a large-scale centralized wastewater treatment plant for whatever reason, right? They might have it as an economic development objective or something such as that. So there is considerable effort. In the studies that I've looked at, it's variable, but there's considerable effort expended on attempting to establish what the community's expectations or desires are, you know, with regard to wastewater.
Leia?
Uh, well, Brian had a follow-up question.
All right.
Sorry, that, again, that's helpful, Rod, but it still seems like we're, we're talking past each other. You know, public, public sentiment is, is interesting and, and helpful, but you know, when, when you think of demand, certainly the wastewater permits in the village area are helpful data, but the, the sentiment at that point that we're interested in is among those potential participants. You know, when it comes to a, a town meeting vote, of course, the folks who live out by Route 132 are valuable, as valuable as anybody else, but they're not really relevant for assessing demand and connecting to a neighboring town. And, and so I'm just trying to get at, I hope that the respondents to the RFQ would do a more thorough job of evaluating demand for such a in-town connection to either system than just looking at permits and a build-out analysis. But maybe that's not a question you can answer because we don't know what the firms are going to propose.
I think that the expectation I would have is that they would be classifying groups of people on the basis of, you know, what their level of interest in the outcome was and where they live. So I think they would be able to distinguish between, say, village property owners who have a strong interest in seeing a, a particular kind of solution and distinguishing that from somebody on the Hartford town line or the Sharon Town Line that might be less interested and, you know, have a, a different set of concerns. But so to be really clear about it, yes, the studies that I've seen pay a, a, a large amount of attention to establishing what you're, what it is that you're looking for, right? And but, but, but I think that what I'm also saying is that they're they're getting layers of information. So the, so your layer is important and I think that that needs to be captured. And I would say that we can make that clear in the RFQ.
Leia?
Thank you. So Rod, tied to that point, in your experience from what you've seen, are there examples of towns and firms working in tandem with gathering public comment or demand comment? Or is there issue if that is done? Like who, who has priority? Is there a priority? Can the town do their own work?
Typically what I understand from these kinds of projects in the past that I've been involved with and, and looking at the work of others and talking with other people in, in towns where these studies have been undertaken, the teams of, you know, the, the, the engineering firms that, that get these contracts are really experienced at what they do. But they necessarily need to integrate their work with the planning commission and, and other public bodies. And so there is, there is, you know, when, when those projects work really well, they've got a really good, positive working relationship with the planning commission and other entities and the select board in the town. Like there's typically the, the one I'm thinking of here that's quite well-known is, is in Warren. They, they formed a wastewater study committee and it was a very well-regarded committee with, with well-respected people on it in the community that were very active. It was a very effective study. It, the study was well-received partly because the engineering team and the committee got along together really well and did really good quality work and people respected them for it. So what I'd say is, um, you know, a competent, good consulting team and a competent, well-organized, thoughtful planning commission and select board will get a good product.
Jeff?
Jeff Goodrich has his hand up.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, there are a number of factual things I might address, but it's factually important to note that the state started permitting process, Vermont started a permitting process statewide in 2006 plus or minus. So I encounter, my firm encounters with many towns, including Norwich, many properties that do not have prior permits. Nonetheless, the basic approach the state takes is based on April 2019 rules with respect to bedrooms or historic bedroom documentation and the flow charts that, that are there in. Having said that, that's a town-wide issue that can also be replaced with Norwich Fire District flow records within the Fire District downtown because the state does acknowledge metering as, as a valid way of establishing flows.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I don't want to foreclose, uh, members of the planning commission for, from further dialogue, but I, some point soon I might want to make a motion and I, I would like to make sure that members of the public, if they have comments, you know, given that rules of the meeting that we give them an opportunity to be heard on the subject of wastewater study. Would that be appropriate at this time? Or should we see if anyone else in the, any other members, if they have questions or comments?
I, I think right now, I, I, what I thought we were doing was carrying basically Rod lay down sort of the, the, the basics, the basic information. And I think that this is just my opinion, it can be debated. That we've let Rod, I'll let this, this section get taken care of first and then you know, the public will can, can speak. I mean, they can speak, they can raise their hand at any time and, you know, we can decide, I decide right then as Stuart just did.
Can we give them an opportunity now? I mean, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we're not foreclosing the opportunity for public comment.
Right, so Stuart.
Yeah, thanks, Ernie. So it, it seems to me that you're, you're putting the cart before the horse. You know, you're talking about spending 15 grand or 30 grand or whatever the number turns out to be without knowing whether there's any, any need or any demand. We know, we know from the sewer study that was done in 2005 that the soils in the village area are really quite good. We heard that from multiple engineers. And I don't think the soils have changed since 2005. What, what's changed likely is the cost of the project. And we do know from that study and, and also from engineers' evaluations, what the cost per pipe is, what the cost for pumping stations are. But, but to know who's going to hook up is a primary kind of thing. And, and that's something that you really can determine without spending the kind of money that you're talking about, simply by doing a survey of the people in town or the people who you think might, might have any interest at all in, in hooking up. I suspect that you're not going to find a lot of residents who have working septic systems in the village. We're going to want to hook up and pay for something that they don't need. I also suspect that you've got commercial entities that don't necessarily want to want to hook up and pay. But I don't know that for sure because I haven't talked to or surveyed them. want to hook up and pay. But I don't know that for sure because I haven't talked to or surveyed them. But it seems to me that that's your first step before you start spending the kind of money that you're talking about. So I would really appreciate it if, if you did a survey of those people who you think are likely or possibly going to want to hook up, get their, uh, get their opinions and do, and do a survey. And you don't have to spend a lot of money to do it. I mean, Survey Monkey is pretty, pretty darn inexpensive. So that, I, you know, the 2005 survey that was done is, is relevant. You have a copy of it. I'm sure you've read it, or at least I hope you've read it. And it should be regarded and factored in to what you're thinking about doing. So you've also got opinions from the public itself on the two large surveys that were done, the one in 2005 and the one in 2018, which talk very specifically about how people regard municipal sewage and also whether they're willing to pay for it. Now, that's the public at large. It's not, it's, not only the people in the village, but obviously the people who live out at Goodrich Four Corners and other places that would not be serviced by this. So it would be, it seemed to me that it would be who of you to do a study of those people who you think might conceivably have an interest in being serviced, uh, before you start to spend money and before you start to spin your wheels. So thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, Stuart. Leia?
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate that comment. I just wanted to comment that it was my understanding at this agenda item that we were starting with Rod answering some questions that we had asked for answers for, that it is a larger discussion, that there are larger questions of the who, what, when, where, why, that I hope will be part of this discussion to hopefully then lead to discuss Jeff Lubel's suggestion of how we can bring this forward. I, I didn't see it as a cart before the horse. I saw it as Rod answering some questions to help with the larger discussion that I hope we get to.
All right, Rod, did you want to move on?
You're on mute, Rod. Thank you. Um, no, I, at this point, there's some more detailed information about the process and so forth, but I think that it, it might, and I, I, I'm happy to take other questions about the program, how it works, or, or, or how, why it works. I think I've tried to give a, as, you know, balance the detail against the, um, the needs of the meeting to try and establish the commission's level of interest in pursuing a study. So, I, you know, I'm happy to, happy to respond to other questions.
Hey, Jackie?
Yeah, I just thought that was helpful detail. It, it was better than we thought originally. There sounds like there's some good flexibility and some reasonable cost to get more facts on the table. And that's what I'm interested in, is some more facts. This, this thing has been spinning around for decades and, and let's just, I'm interested in getting some more facts at a reasonable cost. And I was pleased to hear that those, that the reasonable cost seems to be within reach. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Jackie, uh, that it's, uh, it seems like a reasonable cost and the timeline seems good, uh, potentially consistent with other needs that we're hearing in the town. I, I wonder though, Rod, if you could address Stuart's question, point in, in this way, is it, um, would it be possible to structure the study so that there could be an initial phase that tries to assess demand for the service before you spend the money on the technical sort of detail, or is it important that the technical detail happen first or simultaneous? I'm just trying to understand sort of how this would work and what might be feasible. Uh, appropriate.
I'm, I've seen different formats and I've seen different approaches. And I, I'm sure that reflects the, the way in which the question or the issue is, is framed in, in, in each community. So, you know, I, I think it's, I think there's some flexibility here. The feasibility studies that I've seen that have enrolled into a larger document, including a engineering study frequently include the output from Survey Monkey type survey work that, that Stuart actually cited. That's sort of a preliminary, um, first cut. I want to be try, I, I, I'm going to try and insert some clarity here, just terminologically. I want to try and separate out what, what an engineer might think of as demand for wastewater in, in a kind of a quantitative way, in a measured way. So going back to Jeff Goodrich's comment, you know, you've got these relative, you know, it's relatively hard quantitative data, you, you know, in, in Norwich Village where the fire, or where the Fire District is in Norwich, you've got metered flow, and there's a relationship between metered flow of clean water going in and wastewater coming out. So you can actually get a pretty solid number there about demand, existing demand, looking at that data. That shouldn't be confused with the demand for a particular solution to the problem, right? So when I'm saying things like public sentiment or public interest or feelings, what I'm trying to distinguish between is demand as a quantitative measure, how many gallons, you know, like a physical number versus people's interest in a particular solution or you know, an approach to a particular problem, which is a, which people sometimes in this group, I think, also describe as demand. But I'm trying to actually be pretty careful to say, demand is a quantitative number and supply is a quantitative number, but public interest and public viewpoints are also really critical in the decision-making process, but they're gathered in a different way, they're analyzed in a different way, and they happen at different times. I think that the survey that Stuart's referenced in the 2005 study, the 2018 survey would be, you know, questions that we're getting at those things. What's your, you know, what's your preference? Would be something that would be worked on in the early part of the feasibility study and maybe revisited on the basis of technical information, right? I hope that answers your question.
Well, it, it does in part. If I could just ask a follow-up, Brian, and then I don't know if it preempts or not what you have to say, but it, it, it seems to me that, uh, when I, when I heard you say, Rod, I want to make sure I understand this, is we could set up the study, right, so that there's a preliminary phase of work and that we make a decision at that point about whether to move forward with the more detailed engineering study. And that preliminary work could include a survey or other assessments, right? So that, I think, partially responds to, to, to concerns about, about cost. And it helps me. I do, though, want to distinguish further around this issue of demand. So I, I certainly agree that there is a hard quantitative number that you can get that is essentially a measure of, of estimated usage, which is based on wa, on water flow. It could be based on, on numbers of units, could be based on lots of things. It is certainly not an estimate of demand, uh, as that term is conventionally understood by human beings, which is whether people would want a sewer system, right? So it is a measure of usage. And the question that I think when we need, what we would want to estimate is when we want to try to get a sense of what fraction of that usage might be interested in a particular solution, and that would be something that you would ideally want to quantify, even though it would not have the precision of the usage estimates, because it would involve an estimate, right? That is derived from a survey or some other tool, or potentially could be derived from the experience, right? Let's say, for example, they've done 50 studies like this before, and they've determined that whenever there has been a usage of X, the demand for the actual, you know, wastewater solution that's offered is, you know, one quarter to one half of X, that would be another basis for coming up with an estimate. So you might not want to call that demand, but, but I am talking about, I would like to get some kind of quantitative estimate that would reflect how much wastewater solution we might actually want to buy, whether it's an alternative wastewater system, a community wastewater system, a connection. So I, I don't know if there's a terminology for that in the, in the state of the art, but it's, it's not the same thing as what is the public opinion about whether this is a good idea or not. It is actually an attempt to develop a quantitative estimate of the likely usage of a wastewater, uh, system if we were to connect. Does that make sense?
Right.
Yeah, let me think about, yeah, I think we, I think we might be trapped in some kind of weird terminological thing. I think that, I think that ultimately, when you try to size a system, I mean, if, if the study goes towards proposing solutions, it, it could be, it could be a variety of solutions, right? The, the hypothetically, the study could say you could accommodate this much existing demand with an in-ground, you know, with, 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 with a soil-based system. And that soil-based system is going to be $7 million. Alternatively, you could sat, you could, you could satisfy that demand by hooking up to a, a neighboring town for $4 million. You've got that choice, right? And so the townspeople would be in a situation where they might prefer the soil-based system, even though it's almost twice the cost of, of connecting to a neighboring town. But it's based on, um, the pros and cons of each solution. And, um, in, in, you know, in terms of its design and the way it functions, and then also cost and how much capacity either system has for increased, increased flow, right? So I, I don't, I, I, I'm not disagree, there is more to it than just public sentiment. I'm not, but, and I, I understand the distinction that you're drawing. I, my, my understanding of the way engineers figure out what size system towns need, um, whatever that system is, whether it's soil-based or whether it's a wastewater treatment plant or whatever it is, takes the hard data, including the build-out analysis, and then adds on some kind of, you know, amount for, you know, variability, like growth, or, you know, what, you know, some, like over and above those. And so I, I think we're sort of talking about the same thing. I, my, my, my sense of it is that the study is going to actually look at the question that you're posing and, and, and have, and be able to answer that.
Brian?
Didn't Brian have a question?
Yeah, Brian.
Thank you, Ernie. I want to make two points. One is, is to say, uh, I, I'm saying this not just as a former pollster, but as a, as a consumer of public opinion research. We shouldn't pretend that a handful of us putting some questions in Survey Monkey is a substitute for skilled, experienced public opinion research. It's, we, even if we did a survey of, of interested residents and businesses in a relevant geographic area, that's something we would absolutely suggest to the select board that they procure, you know, experience, an experienced firm to do. It's not a, it's not a free thing that we've, so I, I, I think it's, we do a disservice to the, to the work and, and what we hope to get out of it if we pretend like, like we can just do that quick and dirty and, and preempt any real work or any cost. The, the second point is that, um, right now, Stuart made a great, great point, actually, and that's, well, we might know something about the soils. There are a lot of other variables that are perhaps less well-known today. And, and so when I think of a, a way that you would structure some public opinion research, it's essentially saying to folks, you know, under different scenarios, today you pay X, assuming your system fails every however many years, and you do whatever maintenance to keep it going each year. And under a future scenario, you could pay Y instead, and that would save you Z in headache or cost or whatever. Right now, we know none of those numbers, and, and that is exactly what the technical analysis that Rod is talking about can give us. Without, without those, those real data points, the survey is is hypothetical and significantly less meaningful. I, I don't think it's something you can rush and do in advance. Otherwise, you get back the same kind of ungrounded, you know, and unhelpful vague survey responses that we have to date. I think we need a technical analysis of the universe of possible solutions and what that could really look and feel like to the folks involved, and then we see what people think.
Stuart?
So let me be perfectly crass and direct. What, what needs to be known, in my opinion, is how many people are there who want to hook up to a system, any system? And how much are they willing to pay? That, to me, is the heart of the matter. You can't design a system unless you know how many people you want to, you want, you want to know how many people want to hook up to the thing. So it's, it really starts with the, uh, with the dollar figure, or at least that's, that's an extremely important part of this. So all, all of the hypotheticals about, you know, whether the system should be so large, or should be this, or should be that, and the technical analysis, all of that really, to me, is secondary unless you know to start with how many people really want to hook up and what are they willing to pay for that hookup? If nobody's willing to pay for this, then you're, you're beating your head against the wall. So, thanks.
Yeah. Leia?
Thank you. I have what might seem like a left-field question for Rod with regarding these proposals and the work that is done. Application, actually, in the application process, to your knowledge, what percentage of applications are self-rejected in the way they say, for example, they say, never mind, we don't want it? And is there any penalty? The second question is, is that not advised because that's not how it's done? I have assumptions, but I don't know actual data.
No, I think that there are examples of communities that do the feasibility study and reach the conclusion that for whatever reason, either, you know, technical, geological reasons or cost reasons or whatever that, that they don't want to pursue it. And I don't know, you know, how many fall into that category, over what period of time. The people that I've spoken with were from DEC when I gave them some background as to Norwich's circumstances. All felt that a feasibility study and a preliminary engineering study would definitely shed light on the situation and allow the public to make more informed decisions. And that, um, they thought that that was important, and they, they did not urge or encourage me to communicate to you or to think about, look, you know, you need to be really certain before you start down this path. There was no, there were no reservations or, or communication about, look, once you're on, you know, you don't really want to start this unless you're kind of pretty sure that you want to go through with it. There was none of that kind of feedback that I was receiving. In fact, quite the opposite. It was like, no, it sounds, sounds like you've got some, some issues that you need to resolve. And, um, the best way to go about doing that is to do one of these studies. And I, I don't want to be flip about it, but I mean, the terms, if you like, the terms of the support are mu, much more, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Comfortable or manageable than I, than I earlier imagined them to be. So, you know, if you don't even have to pay for the study for five years, I mean, and, and, and then you make, simply make five annual payments for the entire cost of the study if you, if at that point you decide not to, you know, for 50% of the value of the study, if you decide not to pursue anything. You, you know, I, I don't know how to sort of put this in, in context, but, you know, in any one year, um, you know, the town spends quite a bit of money getting professional advice on a whole bunch of other things that, that well exceeds that, and, um, that don't answer such big questions. So, you know, I, 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 I think it, um, I think it's a fairly good deal. And, you know, and it, it might be my bias as a planning professional and a, a person that, that depends deeply on technical information. But just to echo what Brian said earlier, without this technical information, we're really struggling to communicate the situation to the public, and we're really struggling to provide the public with the information that they need to make an informed decision down the path, which maybe we don't need, we don't want to do anything, or maybe we do want to do something. But, but it seems like a pretty good deal at this point. But it's, the decision is yours and the select boards.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's kind of a point-of-order question. I mean, I, and partly, I want to make sure.
Yeah, it's kind of a point of order or a question. I mean, I and partly I want to make sure I know Leah. You made some comments earlier about a conversation that she wants to have. So I I, you know, I. I would normally say that I'd like to make a motion at this point that we could then discuss more specifically. Leah, maybe it's a question for Leah. Was there a co- another conversation that you wanted to have before we have a motion or do you want to have that? Discussion in the context of a motion or or how?
Thank you. It it might it might flip in, it might just fold in naturally as far as the organic conversation, but essentially. Um, looking at this topic from previous discussions till now, there, you know, I it sounds. Uh, there are many factors at play, key facts. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the who, what, when, where, why, as well as then also. Are we all operating with the same level of information on the table? And in my professional background, we tend to make sure all the information is viewed by everyone, whether it's a chart, et cetera. And while not wanting to bog down a meeting with implementation charts and all that kind of stuff. Um, what happened between these two meetings was some collaboration and so there's an attachment. Of questions to consider that Jeff Goodrich and I were talking about. Essentially, my hope, not necessarily in this meeting, but throughout. Is to make sure the facts and the key details are presented to all of us so that we all are of the same understanding. It is very clear on this call that there are some people that just have more expertise than others. And if we're making a decision as a group, my hope is that. Some information is just available to all of us. The way I like it is actually that we're all looking at it on a screen and and we can understand it, whether it's dollar signs. Who's in charge of what, et cetera. So I wanted to make note of those questions as a start of the conversation because to me. I'm not even certain if even if we make a recommendation to the select board, there are other questions like. Who's running this project? Who's who's the head group or, you know, there are lots of key things to. Um, make sure we as a commission have the a similar understanding, whether we vote each other out, et cetera, or whatnot, but. We have the understanding and I think that there's a lot that we're waving our hands to. And so my hope is throughout this process. We can start with some of it tonight by looking at the attachment or determine when we answer certain questions or. Whether those questions could go to another entity like the select board. And I just hope that we continue that discussion. That, thank you. That's really what I wanted to say. I just wanted to make sure that we continue to do that. Um, and make sure that we are all operating as a team to understand that that's what we want, right? That's my hope.
So. That's helpful. Um, and this I'm just one member of the commission here, so I I I guess my question would be. You know. Is are there specific questions on that list, you know, that you feel? You would want answered before. You would vote on a motion that might be related to recommending that a wastewater study be be conducted.
Um, I think. For me personally, I I want to be sure we as a commission have a an up to date understanding. Of where the Marion Cross project is, if there's any, I think there was other correspondence, et cetera. I'm not sure. Or if it's necessarily um. Relevant, because I know that in a way we can just make a recommendation to the select board and they can do what they choose, but I just want to make sure we have up to date information of. Are we as a commission as part of the discussion? Are we making this discussion and this choice based on? The school or the school and or anything, just so that we have. The school or the school in the town and what is the update on the school's situation? I think we it's worthwhile to discuss that, even if we table it and say. It's separate, let's move forward with the motion. That's what I would feel comfortable because they are inherently overlapping.
Is there anybody who has an update on what the school's interest is or? Has anyone been in communication with them since last meeting and get a sense of their where they are? Sounds like Rod has a.
Rod and then Stuart.
Two, um. I received an email um after I posted the agenda for this meeting from Tom Cannon suggesting that he was going to attend and um. For whatever reason, he's not, he's not been able to make it tonight. Um, I've not received any correspondence. Um, from the from the Norwich School District on on the status of their proposal. Um, and so the only the only information I have is the information that I was working with that was available in the public domain.
Stuart.
So the latest information that I have is from the uh. Meeting uh this past week. Uh, and the minutes that were issued. And what the minutes say, and I I could forward them to you or you could look them up yourself either way. Um, and what it said was that during the month of April, there would be significant testing on a number of properties. To see whether they they are viable alternatives. There was really no mention of Hartford in that in those in those minutes. And what I gather and and I'd be glad to be corrected if I'm wrong. What I gather so far from Hartford is that there has not been a great deal of enthusiasm. From flowing from the town of Hartford to accept um sewage, either from the Marion Cross. School and the three businesses along Route Five. Um, or a larger. From the town of Norwich. So that's that's as much as I know and be happy to be corrected if somebody knows more.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Thank you.
I I I think it might be helpful for me to make a motion, if that's okay, we can continue this conversation and it it's related, Leah, to the question you asked too about the relationship of the school. Proposal to to this one. Would that motion be in order?
I I would just like to to say one thing that. Um, I just noticed is that. We've been the biggest stakeholder in this, which is the Marion Cross School, still hasn't. Really given us any clear direction on which direction they want to go. Um, so I'm not sure. Um. I I don't know if if. You know, the geek in me wants to to find out the information so that we for once and for all have. Have some technol- technical information. But. The biggest stakeholder hasn't even told us that they're really interested in doing anything with that information yet, from what I can tell, based on what Rod was saying a few minutes ago. Um. And it seems to me that. At the very least, we should be waiting until we get something. You know, something a little bit clearer about what what direction they think they're going to be going in. Before we we launch off and and start spending money. I mean, I'm not even convinced that this is this is a a bad idea in that. It's it's not, I mean, this town spends a lot more silly money than this. Uh, than what Rod is 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 projected here. Um, so I'm not, I'm not really super worried about that part of this issue. Um, but it's just, I I'm just troubled by the fact that the school still hasn't given us any any idea really yet of what they're doing. And and they are the biggest reason we're going through this. That's just my opinion. Jeff. Then Leah.
Why don't Leah go first and then maybe I'll make my motion? I I have some comments on that, but I I think it would be useful to have the motion on the table.
So I think it, thank you. I think it would be curious to just to look at the motion and if it's the exact proposed resolution of of the attachment. Just looking at the timing language personally, but that's just my comment.
Okay, Jeff.
Yeah, Stuart, can I? Would it be okay for me to share my? I'm sorry, Stuart, not Stuart. Uh, Rod, can I share my screen? You can now, okay. Um, yeah, I I thought I would just put this up here so we can look at it together and decide if if it's something we want to. Move forward here. So. I I I put the background here. I don't think that needs to be part of the motion, but I. I I feel like the school, the school's needs is part of why we might do this, but not the only reason we we might do this. The the town plan itself calls for, if you remember looking at this issue. Um, if it can be done for a reasonable amount of money and relatively quickly, it would fulfill a commitment in the town plan. Uh, at the same time. Um, if the school has a need, it it it's also another reason to do this. I feel like it's sort of a. Kind of a synchronicity of of interest, but not. It it's not dependent on this. I mean, if the school tomorrow were to say, we don't want to do this. You know, and the question was, should we spend fifteen thousand dollars that we have to pay back in in five to 10 years to? Finally put to rest this question that's been out there and get a better sense of what the need is. Um, it seems to me that's I would be worth doing, but the fact that the school has a need to me is makes it even more more useful. Um. My my view is that it it's not really the school's decision about what to do with this, you know, it it would be ultimately the town that needs to make a decision. About whether or not it wants to enter into an inter municipal agreement with. With uh with Hartford, obviously, it's up to Hartford too, right? It would be a mutual thing, but. The, you know, most in most towns, this it's it's not the school district that goes out and procures wastewater s- system. It's the town that supplies wastewater for the school and everybody else, right? And so. I think part of what we would, what we would try to find out here is, is there a demand for and a, you know, a feasible system that people might be interested in? That could meet the needs of the school and potentially other people. And if if there is a lot of interest in 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 this, then I think the issues that Rod has raised about the fairness. Um. Uh, of 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 meeting certain landowners wastewater needs and not others, you know, really comes to the fore, right? I mean, if we determine, for example, that there are a lot of people downtown that would like. The opportunity to connect, not downtown, the Village Center uh to to, you know, would like the opportunity to connect. Or if there are other people along Route Five South that would want to connect, it would. It would be unfair to have for the town to support, you know, a private proposal that doesn't accommodate those other users, right? Um. It might also be more attractive ultimately to Hartford to have a a little bit of a a larger. System if they're going to go through the trouble to have, you know, to have this. So I I feel like the. What the study does is it gives us the data and the information that we need both to solve a longstanding or address a longstanding issue. And question that we've had for decades, right, about whether or not there ought to be a solution here that uh a wastewater solution. It it also gives us, it also, and this is really important, it gives the town the information that it needs to respond to the school's proposal. Right? Because right now there's this fairness issue looming out there that that we're worried that we might. I- is it really uh fair to to support a private uh sort of connection and not? Support the connection of other people, but if it turns out that there is no interest in other people, then I think that issue is addressed and now we can. We can move forward with the school's proposal if it turns out to be financially and technically feasible. Um. So that I I so I feel like these issues are intertwined, but they're not entirely dependent on each other. Um, so I I what the resolution recommends is that we procure a wastewater study on an expedited basis. I I should say that I think it's really important that we try not to hold up the school. And so in the event that we. Do the study and determine that it's not appropriate to move forward with wastewater solution, the town doesn't want to get involved and, you know, that. And we're now in a better position to support the school, great, we don't hold them up, but. If it turns out that there is a broader need out there and we want to try to meet that broader need along with the school's need. We would have the ability to formulate what that idea is and to figure out how much it would cost and make make a real helpful decision. So. That's where the second point is, you know, um. That we would of 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 the resolution that'll help us make an informed recommendation about how to address the school district needs and any other needs that we have. And then the final bullet of the resolution here really is a a a recommendation that we, you know. Kind of engage with the school district and any other parties are working with to really better understand their proposal and its technical and financial feasibility. Uh, you know, I do, I I I, you know, we have a very competent uh planning director who has raised concerns. I think we need to take those seriously. Um, I think we want to hear, though, what the school has to say and and perhaps have some opportunity for dialogue and. So I I think we ought to not tell them no until we move forward with these other things and have those conversations. So. That's kind of the resolution and the rationale for it. And I think it 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 accommodates. You know, the, I think it would provide a way to to meet Marion Cross needs if they decide that they need a connection. And but it would also be something that would work be worth doing, even if the school district decides to pursue another. Alternative, given the kind of the longstanding interest in solving and determining whether there's a need for wastewater uh along the corridor in downtown. Or in the village.
My 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 take on on this is that once we remove the the school. From the equation, try to to sort of just start dealing with this, you you then start falling into the. Um, the opposite, you you know, we, as we talked about earlier, there's there's two kinds of. Demand, which I'm going to call the technical and then the uh the the uh personal. And I think we're going to get. Go from the technical, if without the school, we go from needing the or getting the technical demand. And then we end up sliding into um having to focus on a personal demand. Um. And. The personal demand doesn't require. This kind of study. Uh, this 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 study is 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 technical uh in nature and. It 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 just, like I said, I think that the school has to be part of why we're going to do this upfront. Otherwise, it's it's not worth it because it just becomes a battle between the people, it just becomes a battle between people who say, I want this period. I just want it for myself and the people that say, I don't want it for myself or whatever personal reasons. Um, so um, I don't think we settle anything um by having a a study that does not. Um. Uh, address itself to the the needs of the school. So I think that the best thing to do would be to wait until the school. Tell gives us a hint at least. Okay, I can't tell who raised a hand first, Jeff, or I mean.
Right, Brian had his hand up first and then Leah.
Ryan.
Ernie, did Jeff make a motion?
No.
Well, I, yeah, I I have made this, I I I moved to approve this resolution.
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Um, if if we're going to have discussion, I'd be happy to have.
Yeah. We've got a second, you got a motion in a second, so we have to discuss it.
Great. Um, so.
Oh, Brian, go ahead.
If I may. Uh, Ernie. Um. This, the school did have a plan. Um, they 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 wanted to connect with Hartford with these. Uh, local businesses. And that's run into a bit more trouble than they expected. Um, what they didn't have is a firm request yet at our last meeting from us. Um, as the planning commission. Um, what's what's important here is that this study, unlike any other study. That the select board or the planning commission has access to today. Would be unbiased, done by third party experts and in a manner consistent with. Other towns that have pursued thoughtful, data driven analysis and decisions on these issues. We don't have that today. We, as the planning commission, are in a bad place to make recommendations to the select board. This this kind of a study. Is so cheap, so cheap. Whoever's been a consultant knows thirty thousand dollars for an entire study by like real experts. This is ridiculous. We we should have done this yesterday. You have no idea what you're getting for such little commitment. Think of all the things you vote on on town meeting. This is pennies for something that would seriously, seriously matter for decision making for our town for many, many years. We have nothing like that today. Uh, you know. A- any goal, you you know, uh, last year or the year before, the select board did a visioning exercise where where they had. Um. You know, helpful but very ambitious goals for the future of the town. Anything on that list requires a a base, a a common knowledge around facts. That's what this gives us. And you know, I just can't, the the idea of. Waiting for the school to, the school doesn't have to ask, they have their own studies. It's the select board and we as a group that don't, we, we don't have a common public, shared understanding of the facts, the options, the costs and the benefits. That's what this gives us. This lets us do our job as a planning commission. We should absolutely move forward with this.
So Ernie, I think, I think. One, one person at a time, please.
Hang on, Bernie.
Yes.
Roger Arnold had his virtual hand up.
Okay, Roger.
And also Leah, just to remember, she had her hand up too.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair here, I'm happy if you take the planning commission's comment before mine. So if you'd like to take Leah's, you can.
Okay, Leia.
Okay, thank you. Um, my main comment in reviewing this document was looking at, you know, having a position to make a recommendation. I see the text within the resolution to include continuing conversations with other stakeholders. Um, I, I'm concerned that um while I do value caution, um, I am concerned that at least in some of my experience here, that if we continually wait till other people make a decision, I, I think we're at the um mercy of schedules. And so I think a, a strong recommendation that includes conversation with key stakeholders is responsible and it's what we can do. And um, I think if we continue to wait, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. I also agree with Commissioner Loeb that um I don't necessarily see this study as just resolving this issue. I think it's helping the work that we're looking to do as stated in the town plan and looking for the future of Norwich as well. And having some concrete professional evidence and information to help future decisions, whether immediate or down the line, is very strongly worthwhile considering.
Thank you.
So Ernie, now Jackie has a hand up, so you're going to have a very challenging.
Jackie.
Jackie or Roger?
Jackie, you're on mute.
I know, okay, sorry, my controls are all hidden. Uh, anyway, um, I just want to uh support what uh Brian said and what Leah just stated. Uh, we owe it to uh the town and ourselves to get the facts. I really feel like that would take a lot of the yeah, a lot of the swirl out of the, these continuing discussions. Let's just get the facts on the table and I'd like to move forward.
All right, Roger.
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to read two sentences. Consider how to address barriers to development related to limitations on septic capacity. Study implications of improved wastewater management for the economic vitality of the village area. These are action items in your own document that you created and that my governing body approved. And so uh, you know, the people who appoint you, the select board, really want a, a recommendation on wastewater as it relates to economic development, as it relates to land use, as it relates to zoning, um, you know. So it'd be the work that indeed a planning commission does. And so um I just, there were some questions I saw in a document related to the packet. I think when a board is looking, our board, the select board is looking for a recommendation, we're looking about how it relates to the wastewater items and the issues that you've identified and the planning document that we approved. So I wanted just to reiterate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Brian.
Thanks, Ernie. I think Leah, your list of questions is great and I would love answers to all of them. And I hope we can get them either through this study or in parallel to the study. Um, I think they would, the answers would also inform the advice we're able to give to the select board. Um, I don't know the best mechanism to answer all of them, um, but I, I want to thank you for compiling them.
Leia.
I, I, thank you, Brian. I just want to say it was a collaboration with uh Jeff Goodrich as well. Um, and I hope that our planning commission can determine as we discuss what works best, whether we put those questions in a timeline document. However, we do that, I hope that we just use that to keep ourselves accountable of, are we making sure we have all the information? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Should, should we call the question?
Well, I was just going to ask if there's any more public comment first and then after that, I think I'm going to call the question. Uh, Stuart.
So historically, I, I think you're correct that this question has been around for a long time. And I was only a part of one study when there actually have been three or four studies about every ten to fifteen years. And the result of each of those studies, which was populated by presumably knowledgeable people who were thoughtful about this whole issue. The result of those studies was that A a municipal sewage system, whether it was a hookup to Hartford or whatever it was, was unnecessary. And B, that it was too costly. Now, I think you're, I think you're um, at this point, if you were to break it up into two parts, one, the Marion Cross School definitely needs a working septic system, wastewater system. But does the village and or others actually need or want, for that matter, a municipal hookup? I think those are the questions that need to be answered. And they have been answered over the last many, many years by the sewage studies that were done in the past. So in a sense, I think you're, you're trying to reinvent the wheel here. So just, just one man's comment and uh thanks for uh hearing me out.
Thank you, Stuart. So I think it's time to call the question. So.
Jeff Goodrich.
Oh, I can't see Jeff. All right, Jeff. Jeff Goodrich.
We can't hear you, Jeff.
If you're, you're on mute.
Thanks, Jeff. Do you help me again? Is, is there a reason to continue sharing the screen?
No, we, we can, well, we're, we're are uh going to uh move on this motion. Do people want to still see it? Or do you want to, uh, should I stop sharing my screen? What do people on the commission want?
I'd like you to stop sharing the screen so I can see more people.
Can I ask one other comment about this before we go to a vote?
You want me to pull up the screen again?
No, I don't need it on the screen. No. Um, is that all right, Ernie?
Yes.
Okay, um. There is a possibility, my understanding is, there is a possibility that even though we send a resolution, that this select board might have comments back for us. So it could be a continued conversation. That's my understanding anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, we'll make the motion, we'll pass it on to the select board. Hopefully they will ask us to come and present it to their, to their meeting and share the, you know, rationale behind it. And hopefully the town planner can go and, and participate and answer questions about the study the way he very helpfully did tonight. And but yeah, I think that, you know, I, I don't think we are authorized to spend money, right? I think ultimately it's like board's call. So we're making a recommendation at this point. Hopefully if you guys agree with the motion and take it from there.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Okay. We'll start, well, the list, Jeff, Jeff Lubel.
I.
Jackie Allen.
Hi.
Brian Loeb.
Hi.
Layer Romano.
Hi.
Hi.
Ernie, you're, you're going to have to ask me.
All right, Jeff.
I abstain.
Thank you.
So it's five zero one, right?
One hundred and thirty one, yes.
Great, thank you. I appreciate your uh support.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, is there any other business?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, and the future meeting will be the, what is it, second Tuesday?
Yep, May eleventh and then, and then June fifteenth, second Tuesday in the month.
Any further comments from the public? Stuart.
You're, you're on mute, Stuart.
Stuart. You're on mute.
Had to move the screen in order to get unmuted. So the um I would hope that if the select board accepts this recommendation, that they do it in a fashion where the determination of interest and willingness to pay on the part of whoever might be hooking up is determined before you take it any further and that the money that is spent be limited until that determination is made. It seems to me that, that before you go forward, you need to know who the hookups are going to be to the best of your ability and whether they're willing to pay the freight. Otherwise, what's the point of going any further? So, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Stuart. Well, do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, yes, Leia.
I thought maybe I'm, maybe, I'm sorry, maybe it was future meetings, schedule and agendas. Oh, I missed it. It's all right. I can mention it privately. We didn't, you didn't say agendas, so I, I forgot. I thought it was later.
Oh.
Don't worry about it.
All right. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, second.
Do we have to take an individual roll, roll call here?
Just ask.
Yeah, eyes.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Maze. Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.